I'm going to call the meeting of the St. Clair County Board of Commissioners to order, please. Stand for the pledge allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Constitution for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call.
Commissioner Samasco.
President.
Commissioner Baldwin. Commissioner Beeden, present. Commissioner Torello.
Here.
Commissioner Rushing.
Here.
Commissioner Vandembosch.
Here.
Chairperson Bone.
Here.
Items four additions to leases changes to the agendas.
At this time, I'd like to make a motion to remove the Meaden-Hunt runway 1018 justification study.
Support.
Oh, am I supposed to say that and put it under new business item K?
We're going to remove it.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Do we have another amendment? Commissioner Rushing, you want to make item B?
Yeah, 12B, I'd like to accept the rescinding of the resignation of our medical director for final action at 12FF.
So I have a motion and a second.
Support.
All in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed?
Nay.
Approval of the agenda.
Make.
Minutes, item six, minutes previous.
Not to me, I'm still digging through my paperwork here. This time I would move to approve the meetings of the previous meeting from eight fifteen twenty-four and nine five twenty-four.
Support.
All in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? No proclamations, consent agendas, items A through K.
Mr. Chair, I'd like to make a motion to approve items A through K on the consent agenda.
Support.
Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? Reports of standing, special committee starts with Commissioner Samasco.
No report at this time.
Commissioner Baldwin.
No report at this time.
Commissioner Beeden.
I think we're going to hear a lot from the Health Advisory today, so we'll talk about that when we get there.
Commissioner Vandembosch.
Nothing.
Commissioner Rushing.
Just within two weeks, the new road in Memphis, they're doing a fantastic job there, all new concrete along the curbs, and the new road will be put in place within two weeks.
We'll stretch the road in the county.
Not today.
I'm going to take a pass, too. Citizens wishing to address the board, Trey Smith.
And I wanted to first of all thank Commissioner Rushing for being kind enough, for allowing me and him to get into a few meetings since we last had the board meeting, as well as Baldwin, and also Beeden, who I run into, excuse me, in multiple different meetings. I wanted to talk today about the goal of these dialogues. I've been in this community for about 10 years, and I've learned one thing, it's a real hidden gem, if properly promoted, properly shared, and properly advertised. One of the challenges that I notice about our community coming from Miami, Atlanta, any of Columbus, Ohio, is that we don't take pride in the way in which we advertise the good that goes on in our community. And also, you Miss Baldwin, I'm sorry I didn't see their love. And I'm looking to find ways in which we can attract new talent, find the hidden gems in our community, and figure out where innovation can be seen. People typically are good for talking and complaining about whatever problems they see, and they're the loudest about that, whatever outrage we have. But one thing that's really challenging is we don't introduce good answers, that we are willing to champion ourselves as citizens and tell our elected officials to get behind. And so this is my attempt in these meetings and these opportunities to figure out ways in which we can expand that and show people who have never been here why come here. Because, truth be told, outside of a post 10 years ago, I never knew this city existed. But if you can find a city like this, or a community like this, and a county like this that does have potential and can be molded if given the proper tools and also you have the proper grid, there's an opportunity there. I met some wonderful people that have amazing gifts and talents, from Miami to Atlanta and Columbus. I've never met a in the Lacy Peak president like this, who's been so on the grounds, ready to work, never met commissioners that are actually touchable and tangible. These are things that we should highlight and give people an opportunity to see, because I would never want to believe that this community is limited in the way in which it wants to grow and evolve. I just believe we haven't seen the right angels come along, the right individuals come along, so that we can find ways in which we can benefit from everybody's good and everybody's grace. Thank you.
Bishop Kim Brown.
Ladies and gentlemen, every one of you, I am coming today as a citizen, and I am coming today as a pastor and coming today to express a concern and to be able to again commend you all for all that you do, because I do understand that the job of being a board member and representing is not always easy. Sometime it is difficult. I have had the opportunity now to build relationships, and I can't say that I've been able to so much with all of you, but build relationships within the city, and especially as it pertain to our years gone by, we have had an opportunity to work more closely in the past, especially during the time that we went through COVID and all of these things. I can remember one day, and this was some years ago, and I am getting to where I have to go with this, that I came into the Health Department, and what brought me into the Health Department was a burden. And the burden that I had at the time, Dr. Mergantat, she was our medical director. And I was glad that when I went there that I found an open heart, and open ears, and even someone that shared the same concern. Part of what we started talking about is we began to draw together and try to look at ways in which the community could better be a voice for the Health Department, and that the Health Department can understand some of our issues, especially amongst more marginalized communities, especially amongst those that were right outside of the doorstep, as our good doctor would have said, that were not accessing because of trust, because of misinformation or whatever it was. I had the opportunity to come on yesterday and understand that we're in the process of shifting now and getting a new medical director, now that that position has been split, so that sound like something that was wise on the behalf of the department. But I became concerned when I was hearing that there was a very talented, thank you, Pastor Trey for talking about talent and attracting people into the community, because when I came in five years ago, what I was concerned was that when I came in that we talked about trust, but I said, a lot of the community comes in and we don't even see those here of diverse color, diverse ethnicity that are representing. So I was quite happy when I was hearing that maybe we were wrong.
I think you wrap it up, everybody gets three minutes. Need to wrap it up, if you would, please.
Okay, thank you.
Dawn Falk.
Dawn Falk, I live in Port here on Township. I'd like to brutally talk about two subjects tonight, NDAs. I believe that no elected official should ever sign an NDA with the EDA or any other company wanting to set up shop in St. Clair County. There is absolutely no transparency, and this is done, I believe, because residents, I mean, it stinks to high heaven what they want to do, and the residents don't want what they're selling. There's going to be a lot of pushback from the, or NDAs were signed with the Twenty-Six Mile Project, Ranger, and the Port side Solar Projects, and most recently with the Sabre Fifty-Six, now Solstice Project in Chinatownship. After all, it's we the people who elect these officials, we elect these officials because we expect them to represent our beliefs and our vision for the county that we live in. I'm requesting that our Board of Commissioners write either a resolution or an ordinance prohibiting elected officials from signing NDAs with both the EDA and/or any other company. Heck, I'd like to see the EDA gone from St. Clair County, you can't even attend their meetings. And by the way, Chinatownship's special meeting will be on September 26 at seven o'clock at the Chinatownship Hall, so please attend. The next thing I'd like to talk about is the rescission of notice of resignation from Dr. Nevin, the current medical director of the St. Clair County Health Department. I am currently the vice chair of the Advisory Board of Health for the St. Clair County Health Department, but today I'm speaking to you just as a regular person, but I just want to let you know the context and how I know Dr. Nevin. We have, we are monthly meeting with Dr. Nevin. I know that Commissioner Samasco and citizen Bob Philitz, now Commissioner-elect Bob Philitz, felt that Dr. Nevin was instrumental in finding solutions for the Smith Creek landfill. They are grateful for his insights on this most complex matter. I appreciate how Dr. Nevin is a critical thinker. I appreciate his vast medical knowledge and his impressive medical experience, both in the military and public sectors. I email him, usually just a few sentences concerning such exciting topics such as bio sludge and PFOS, and then Dr. Nevin will magically get back to me in about two days with volumes of information and his interpretation of my questions, which I very much appreciate, public health matters. Dr. Nevin is very kind, he's helpful, he listens to people, he engages the public at our meetings, he goes the extra mile, such as the time he had the Emergency Management Director come in and talk to the board about the fuel and oil infrastructure in St. Clair County. This was in response to a resident's decade-plus concern about the Enbridge Oil Storage Facilities on Murphy Drive. Dr. Nevin is an outstanding medical director and, in my opinion, a real asset to St. Clair County. Please vote to accept the rescission of notice of resignation. Dr. Nevin is a good fit for St. Clair County residents. Thank you.
Elfonso Amos.
Who was that?
Say that again, please.
Elfonso Amos.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Don't worry. Elfonso Amos, former Port Huron City Council member, also the chair of Black Lives Matter Port Huron. And I'm here today to talk about this rescission of Dr. Neiver. I have never in the history of ever heard of someone resigning from a position, someone else being offered a position, or being entertained the offer of position, and board members calling that person and asking them to rescind their resignation. You all asked him to stay. He did not want to stay. You all asked him to stay. What reason, other than being misogynistic and racist, would you have to ask that? That is my question to the ones who made that call, started asking, Dr. Neiver, would he stay and why he should stay? Was it because we have a black young woman as the potential medical director here in St. Clair County? Because that's what it appears to be. If that is not the case, why? Somebody has to answer that. Because at the end of the day, I will stand with that doctor, and we will go after this board and this county for every penny and everything that we have, because I will get Ben Crump on that phone, and if you all see what's going on around the country, you see what Ben Crump can do, that will be what's done here. God bless.
Cynthia Bankston.
Hello, I'm Cynthia Bankston, retired nurse, and I'm also on executive board of the, I mean, executive committee of the NAACP. Public Health Code Excerpt, Acts 368 of 1978, MCL 333.2428, Local Health Officer Appointment Qualification, Powers and Duties. A local health department shall have a full-time local health officer appointed by the local governing entity, or in the case of a district health department, by the district board of health. The local health officer shall possess professional qualifications for administration of a local health department that's prescribed by the department. The local health officer shall act as the administrative officer of the board of health and local health department, and may take actions and make determinations necessary or appropriate to carry out the local health department's function under this part or functions delegated under this part, and to protect the public health and prevent disease. As stated in the Michigan-compliant laws, the local health officer acts as the administrative officer of the health department and makes determinations and actions as appropriate to carry out the department's function. That includes selection of a health department staff which falls under her administration function. Liz King is an expert in her field and is the appointed health officer. She understands what is the best interest of the health department and staff and the citizens they serve every day. If she is qualified to fulfill the duty of the health officer per state statute, she is more than capable of being able to select an appropriate candidate for the position of medical director. Dr. Smith was recruited, vetted, and interviewed successfully with an earlier round of applicants that resulted in the hire of Dr. Nevin. Dr. Smith was offered the job and accepted the position, ready to work in St. Clair County. Dr. Smith is a native to Michigan with the required credentials, including obtaining a medical degree from Wayne State and a master of public health from University of Michigan, but also completing a second residency in environmental and occupational health at Mahary Medical College in Tennessee, which means that she graduated successfully and then continued to expand her knowledge by gaining additional proficiency in additional areas adding to her already impressive knowledge base. She is more than qualified, as I'm sure was the conclusion King came to when vetting her through the interview process, or she wouldn't have been selected. Unnecessarily interference by the board of commissions not only delays a necessary change in the medical director's position, but interrupts the functioning and progress of the department and potentially erodes the morale of the department. St. Clair County Health Department administration and leadership should be allowed to navigate staffing and other health department initiatives to the best of their ability without unnecessary instructions. Thank you.
Eileen Tush.
Eileen Tush, I am vice chair of the St. Clair County Republican Party, and we have volunteers from the party that operate or give their time at the Victory Center up in Kimball. And I was contacted last week by one of the volunteers because five people came into the Victory Center and unsolicited, they started talking about what was going on in the St. Clair County jail. Again, this is all hearsay, but it is very concerning, so I am bringing it to the county commission. Apparently, there are MS-13 gang members being lodged in the St. Clair County jail from Canada, and I know that the jail does rent out rooms, does rent out space for Homeland Security and other federal organizations, but it's concerning because the people that gave this information have or have relatives, friends, family that work in the jail. So apparently, this is firsthand knowledge. And I was given the information that it's up to forty percent of the inmates there. So I know that obviously the Sheriff's Department is getting a lot of money, I don't know if it's federal money or if it's Canadian money, but what concerns us obviously is security, because not only security for the deputies and staff that work at the jail, I mean, these are violent gang members, we've heard all about them, and also the neighborhoods. God forbid, something happens, because the family and friends of the inmates of these gang members are coming into the community to either visit or have some kind of contact with them. I'm just asking the commission, I know I hear it all the time, you can't do anything about the Sheriff's Department, you have no jurisdiction, but I'm just asking if somebody would at least investigate what is going on over there. Thank you.
Carol Meller.
Just to correct your, it's not Dr. Neiver, I believe Dr. Neiver is an OBGYN. So as a citizen of the county, I've been going to the advisory board meetings, the health board meetings, I have learned so much from Dr. Nevin, it's been unbelievable, the educational value that this gentleman brings, so I'm glad to see you staying, hopefully staying. I do want to talk about a different matter, you do have a piece of paper that was handed out at your place that I'll be talking about. I'd like to see a show of hands by the board on how many of you know who Matthew Mason is? I see no, I see one hand.
I can't read, I can't read mine, it's blurry.
If you don't know who he is, he is a three-and-a-half-year-old little boy who was beaten, tortured, and murdered. It happened in St. Clair County Stocks Creek Trailer Park in Port Huron Township on February 19, 2018. Yes, you heard me right, that was over six-and-a-half years ago. He's buried in the cemetery behind Port Huron Township offices and the fire department, right near where you, he was tortured and murdered. His face is on the billboard at Michigan and LaPire. His autopsy report concluded by Dr. Spitz was made public, and that's the copy I have for you, so that you can see all the horrific injuries he sustained leading to his death. Police and the coroner both have cases labeled as a homicide. However, our prosecutor, Mike Wendley, refuses to file charges against the two adults in the home at the time of the murder, which was the mother and her then-boyfriend. The boy was viciously beaten, including severe injuries to his genitalia, and then he was asphyxiated. Only evil can do this to a child. In 2018, Matthew was found dead in the morning by his babysitter in his bed. The mom and her boyfriend had left for work telling the babysitter he was asleep. Babysitter called 911, but he had already been long dead. It's hard to believe the mother did not go in to say goodbye or give her child a kiss before leaving for work, and to fail to notice all of the injuries that you see listed on that autopsy opinion. We as a county and you as our leaders need to support the child's grandparents and family in making justice happen and the arrests needed being made. I ask that all of you here and those who may be watching at home, please join the Facebook page, Justice for Matthew Mason, and Mason is spelled M-A-I-S-O-N, and follow the lead of support by the Port Huron Township Board and its citizens, and place a sign showing we need to obtain justice for Matthew and all he suffered. The board needs to show its support and that it cares about the safety of the citizens of this county, no matter the age. If you commit a crime, it should not be tolerated. We as a county need to take a stance that we want to have the crime dealt with and not just turn to blind eye. Again, I ask all of our leaders here tonight to speak up at your city and township meetings and bring awareness of little Matthew and support this cause for justice. Thank you, everybody.
Vanessa Davis.
Hi, my name is Vanessa Davis, I'm in St. Clair Township. I have two things to talk about, I hope that doesn't mess up my slip. Just to give you an update, with Murphy Drive, we're still dealing with all the issues. St. Clair Township continues to not enforce any ordinances, even after numerous FOIAs, they denied my FOIAs. And since then, I filed a complaint with the St. Clair County Sheriff's Department, which I was told by the state of Michigan that I could do, the Attorney General's Office also, and I found out that, bringing up the Sheriff's Department, is that tickets aren't evidence. And I said to the detective, I said, well, then why do we write them? So I just want to let you know, our issue stems broadly. It's not just dealing with the township, the state, it's dealing with your local governance body where justice is supposed to be blind. It doesn't matter if you're a board member, if you're a county commissioner, it should be fair, and it's not. And I just wanted to bring that to your attention, because it was mind-boggling to me, how they can do that. And my other thing is that I am just so grateful for Dr. Neiver. He, when you are dealing with this issue for years, and you've gone to the, and you've gone to the Health Department, and they knew about your issue and blew you off, they wasted the federal government's FDA, I'm sorry, EPA's canisters, they didn't even care about us to come and say, hey, do you need these canisters that you fought to get? He took his time, he didn't know me. He spent like an hour and a half on the phone trying to talk to me, finding out what was going on, how, he was compassionate. I'm a nobody, and to have somebody care about a nobody, that really makes you feel like you matter, especially when you've not mattered for so long. We're considered a throwaway community. And just because I don't know a whole lot, but we all make mistakes, we all make decisions sometimes at the fly, and then we turn around and make another decision. It would be a shame. It would be a shame that we lose him. It would be a shame that we would lose somebody that would take their time to get a hold of the EPA, it wasn't the EPA, waste, it's not waste management, emergency management, to bring them in to talk to the health department, to find out that really, they don't even have any control over these facilities, they're the cleanup crew after. And it, I just ask every one of you, if you weren't on this board and you needed someone to be able to care about you and give you a time of day.
We need to wrap it up.
Thank you. Wouldn't you want somebody like Dr. Neiver? I'm sorry, I killed it. Thank you.
Mary Conlin.
I have one request for this board, so it'll take me about five seconds. You guys have meetings at four o'clock and you have meetings at six o'clock. I understand meetings at four was because of summer, kids are back in school, it's hard for everybody to get to these meetings when you have them at four. I request that you move all meetings for the VOC on Thursday nights back to six o'clock. Thank you.
Good evening, Commissioner. I'm Robert Felix, St. Clair County Commissioner-elect for the district. I'd like to talk to you all tonight. I've heard quite a few people talk about Dr. Nevin, Remington Nevin, and I can say his name correct. It's been butchered several times, but that's irrelevant. When you get change in an area or community, it's always hard. What's the person going to be like? What do they look like? How do they speak? But what I look at as a retired engineer is what experience do they bring to the position? To me, that's all that matters. What position, what experience do they bring to that position? And I want to share with you, Dr. Remington Nevin stepped forward when asked, we had a serious problem at the Smith Creek landfill in which hydrogen sulfide was being emitted into our community for a period of months. It burns your eyes, it makes breathing difficult, and Dr. Remington Nevin came forward and stood up for our community and provided information to the state, the Department of Health and Human Services at the state level, as well as Eagle. And what mattered was his experience, not who he looked like or who he was, it was his experience. In my corporate work, I had a CEO say to me years ago, "Experience seeks experience." In other words, if you know what's going on and you want more answers, you don't go to somebody new, you go to somebody that has experience. I'm sure the person that has been considered for the medical director is a very fine doctor. Dr. Remington Nevin has an extremely exclusive resume, if you take the time to look at it and talk to him about his background. That's what I wanted to speak to tonight, is the experience and the difference it made in our community. It resulted in the state health department setting levels of hydrogen sulfide on monitoring equipment down from 70 parts per billion down to 20 parts per billion for a rolling average. That makes a difference on if asthmatics can go outside, it makes a difference on if your eyes will burn when you're out mowing your lawn. It made a huge difference in our life, and he was able to comprehend that. Now, you can overcome a lot of differences with politics, background, policy, with time and understanding. You can't overcome experience, except for the passage of time and knowledge, and that's what concerns me. Dr. Remington Nevin has brought that experience to our community. If there's an opportunity to retain that experience, no matter what the appearance is or what people think, I'm after experience for people's health. That's a very basic request. I urge this board to consider that, and remember that experience seeks experience. Thank you.
Ken Havelman? How do you pronounce that right? Hugelman.
It's a name that's often mispronounced, so Ken Hugelman. I am out of Port Huron. I stand today as a private citizen, and then I also am an appointed member of the advisory board of health. I am covering District One, which would cover Port Huron, Port Huron Township, Fort Grashit Township, Birchville. So Georgia and Lisa would be the commissioners that I represent, the two that didn't do something that is appalling and play politics with the county's public health. I understand that it was a five-to-two vote to table it with these two supporting that we move forward with a vote on our medical director. It's appalling that the board will fall to a private citizen. The gentleman who spoke before me is not commissioner-elect. He is an individual with his name on a ballot that is running unopposed. Our democratic process will take place on the first Tuesday in November and not before that. The primaries in August only determine the names of the individuals that will be on the election in November. To take a private citizen's recommendation, he reached out to the board with a title he has not earned, he has not been elected, he is not replacing anyone on this board as of September 19th. Potentially, in November, he may be elected to take a seat in January. To listen to a private citizen to stop the actions of the board of health in the health department because it concerned him is ridiculous. His voice is no more important, no more powerful than any other voice at this podium. To let someone step in and tell you what you should do as a private citizen while you are an elected official is ridiculous and abhorrent. I am not here to speak against Dr. Nevin. I have learned very much from Dr. Nevin, I trust Dr. Nevin, and I am grateful for the actions he has taken for our county. I'm not here to speak for Dr. Smith and whether or not she would be a replacement that would be effective for it. That's not why I am here. It is a shame on all of you. The fact that you took action from a private citizen in private emails sent to you, that was not a county email address he mailed you from, because Mr. Felix is not a county employee, he is not an elected official, and he is not a representative of anyone in this county. It's unacceptable. I trust Liz King, I trust Greg Brown, I trust former board chair John Jones, and the other appointed members of the advisory board of health, the folks like myself who were appointed by you individuals. You chose me over someone else because you saw something that said, "That's what we want." That's who I trust. I trust Dr. Nevin, I trusted Dr. Ramon, I trusted Dr. Gilmer. The fact that we are moving against process because of a private citizen's request is ridiculous. Yes, Dr. Nevin did great things, he's done great things. That doesn't mean he's the only person that's qualified, capable, or able to do those things going forward for our county. Thank you.
Kevin Watkins.
Hello, Kevin Watkins, I wear many hats. I'm here as a private citizen of Wales Township, and I'm going to give you two minutes and 56 seconds to think about what was just expressed to you. And many of you up there need to be shamed. You're so much pressed trying to prevent something, you're in a panic about who might be our medical director. Nothing against Dr. Nevin, brilliant man. At times, I'm in awe listening to him, the knowledge that comes out of his mouth. That doesn't mean he's the only person that can do that. You know, he was elected for the position here, appointed with a contract, we appreciated him and worked with him, he decided to leave. What were we supposed to do? What was Ms. King supposed to do? Within the powers of her office, she moved forward knowing that the county could not sit without a medical director. And because of what was just stated here in regards to the commissioners doing inappropriate things, inappropriate, to try and block Ms. King's choice, based on, from the interviews in the past, the person who was second would have been your choice if Dr. Nevin had backed out, to bring her in, to step in, to move this county forward, you purposely, I'm going to say why, but the pink elephant in the room said, "Because maybe she's an African-American woman, maybe because she's a woman." Then you didn't want her to be the medical director, so you go out and ask Dr. Nevin to stay, so to give you the opportunity to block it. How shameful is that? How can you look at yourself in the mirror? You do things like that, you're officials. And what was just stated, what King just stated, what you did, working with a person who thinks he's already a commissioner, so you know what his plans are when you get in that seat. Because now he's counted numbers at four, and now the commissioners of St. Clair County wants to run the health department? How many doctors up there? How many nurses up there? We have one EMT? You don't have a clue. What have you done? You hired professionals to do the job, do a good job. You hired Dr. Nevin, you hired Liz King, you hired the people that shared the good things for the committee, you give them the football, should run the ball over the goal line for touchdown, and then you put your foot out and trip them. What kind of sense does that make? You're stepping out of your bounds. It's called winning the Super Bowl, we got all pros in every position, you got to play your position, your position. Liz King is our quarterback, she's our Tom Brady in the health department. You can be the running back, you can be the defensive end, you can be the defensive back, but that's what you are. Don't try to be the quarterback, because then we can't win. Play your position, stay in your lane, because what happens, you're so intense, they have your way, you're doing things borderline illegal. You should be shamed. King has shamed you, I'm double shaming you.
When you're done speaking, if you could fill a card out for me.
Tony Brown, citizen of Port Huron, Michigan. I was just at the health department meeting earlier this week, and they're just simply trying to move forward, and we just need to expeditiously make decisions that will move everything forward, because they're qualified people, and they've chosen, you know, through the interviewing process, candidates. And the person that wanted to leave, we should just let them leave. We want somebody that honestly wants to stay with us and do us a great service. And we don't want to stymie our health department any longer from doing their job and having upper management, what do you call it, micromanage them, because they don't have credentials, so they don't have a person that's heading them and leading them with the proper credentials to get things done. So we, the people, are just asking, please move things forward.
All right. Any other citizens before we move on? Okay, unfinished business. Any unfinished business to come before us? So I just have one comment I'm going to make. I have never signed an NDA in 14 years on this board, probably been on the, probably been eight to 10 years on the EDA, so this whole thing about that Jeff Balms went out and signed NDAs for 26 Mile Road, and I don't even know where that comes from. But item number 12, new business, item A, approval of county disbursements.
This time, I move to approve the August 2024 county disbursements in the amount of
Discussion. Roll call.
Commissioner Samasko?
Yes.
Commissioner Baldwin?
Yes.
Commissioner Beeden?
Yes.
Commissioner Trello?
Yes.
Commissioner Rushing?
Yes.
Commissioner Vandembosh?
Yes.
Chairperson Bo.
Yes. Item B.
At this time, I'd like to make a motion to approve the revised recruitment and hiring, salary and wages, expense reimbursement, management rights and responsibilities, workers' compensation, timekeeping, family medical leave, short-term disability, long-term disability, and discipline and discharge policies.
Support.
Discussion on any of this? All in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed. Item C.
This time, I'd like to make a motion to approve the fund balance policy revisions.
Second.
Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed. Item D.
This time, I move to approve the agreement with Smiles On Wheels to provide kindergarten oral health assessment services in the amount of $54,071.10 for a term of 10/01/2024 through September 30, 2025.
Support.
Discussion. Roll call.
Commissioner Baldwin?
Yes.
Commissioner Beeden?
Yes.
Commissioner Trello?
No.
Commissioner Rushing?
Yes.
Commissioner Vandembosh?
Yes.
Commissioner Samasko?
Yes.
Chairperson Bo.
Yes. Item E.
This time, I'd like to make a motion to approve the contract with Tech Ops Specialty Vehicles in the amount of $351,550.16 for a library mobile outreach vehicle.
Support.
Discussion. Roll call.
Commissioner Baldwin?
Yes.
Commissioner Trello?
Yes.
Commissioner Beeden?
Yes.
Commissioner Rushing?
Yes.
Commissioner Vandembosh?
Yes.
Commissioner Samasko?
Yes.
Chairperson Bo.
Yes. Item F.
Mr. Chair, I'd like to make a motion to approve the fiscal year 2025 secondary road patrol agreement in the amount of $323,357.
Support.
Roll call.
Commissioner Trello?
Yes.
Commissioner Rushing?
Yes.
Commissioner Vandembosh?
Yes.
Commissioner Samasko?
Yes.
Commissioner Baldwin?
Yes.
Commissioner Beeden?
Yes.
Chairperson Bo.
Yes. Item G.
At this time, I would move to approve the fifth addendum to the agreement with CHSTX Incorporated, doing businesses Yes Care, extending the term until 10/31/24, and increasing to not to exceed amount of, I should get this right, it's $3,056,147.50. Thank you.
Support.
Discussion. Roll call.
Commissioner Rushing?
Yes.
Commissioner Vandembosh?
Yes.
Commissioner Samasko?
Yes.
Commissioner Baldwin?
Yes.
Commissioner Beeden?
Yes.
Commissioner Trello?
Yes.
Chairperson Bo.
Yes. Item H.
At this time, I'd like to make a motion to approve the agreement with the Michigan Department of Health and Human Services for the Services Specialist Position for the Probate Court in the amount of $80,700 for a term of October 1st of '24 through 9/30 of '25.
Support.
Discussion. Roll call.
Commissioner Vandembosh?
Yes.
Commissioner Samasko?
Yes.
Commissioner Baldwin?
Yes.
Commissioner Beeden?
Yes.
Commissioner Trello?
Yes.
Commissioner Rushing?
Yes.
Chairperson Bo.
Yes. Item I.
This time, I'd like to make a motion to approve addendum A to the Huron House Agreement for Probation Residential Services, increasing the not-to-exceed amount of $173,470 for the term of 7/1/23 through 6/30/24.
Support.
Roll call.
Commissioner Samasko?
Yes.
Commissioner Baldwin?
Yes.
Commissioner Beeden?
Yes.
Commissioner Trello?
Yes.
Commissioner Rushing?
Yes.
Commissioner Vandembosh?
Yes.
Chairperson Bo.
Yes. Item J.
This time, I'd like to make a motion to approve the agreement with the Environmental Information Logistics LLC for the Regulatory Air Compliance Services for the landfill for the term of October 1st, '24 through 9/30/27, with a not-to-exceed amount of $160,313.
Support.
Thank you.
Discussion. Roll call.
Commissioner Baldwin?
Yes.
Commissioner Beeden?
Yes.
Commissioner Trello?
Yes.
Commissioner Rushing?
Yes.
Commissioner Vandembosh?
Yes.
Commissioner Samasko?
Yes.
Chairperson Bo.
Yes. Item K.
Moving to L, K was removed.
Oh, I'm sorry.
This time, I'd move to approve the Commissioner District Six American Rescue Plan Act project for Wales Township Road Ditch Cleanouts in the amount of $15,681.
Support.
Discussion. Roll call.
Commissioner Beeden?
Yes.
Commissioner Trello?
Yes.
Commissioner Rushing?
Yes.
Commissioner Vandembosh?
Yes.
Commissioner Samasko?
Yes.
Yes.
Chairperson Bo.
Yes.
Item N.
At this time, I'd like to make a motion to approve the Contract Amendment Number Two with MGT Consultants of America LLC for the fiscal year '24, fiscal year '25, and fiscal year '26 cost allocation plans in the total amount of $62,400.
Support.
Discussion. Roll call.
Commissioner Trello?
Yes.
Commissioner Rushing?
Yes.
Commissioner Vandembosh?
Yes.
Commissioner Samasko?
Yes.
Commissioner Baldwin?
Yes.
Commissioner Beeden?
Yes.
Chairperson Bo.
Yes.
Item O.
Mr. Chair, I'd like to make...
Can I go, can I do N first?
Sure.
Oh, I'm sorry.
That's all right. Well, it's, it's mine, so I kinda like it. I would, at this time, like to make a motion to approve Commissioner District Two ARPA Project for Birchville Township in the amount of $400,000 to install water lines down Harris Road to State Road.
Support.
Discussion. Roll call.
Commissioner Rushing?
Yes.
Commissioner Vandembosh?
Yes.
Commissioner Samasko?
Yes.
Commissioner Baldwin?
Yes.
Commissioner Beeden?
Yes.
Commissioner Trello? Chairperson Bo.
Yes.
Item O.
Mr. Chair, I'd like to make a motion to approve the amendments to the 2024 General Fund as presented.
Support. Baldwin.
Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Those opposed. Item P.
This time I would move to approve Commissioner District Five American Rescue Plan Act Project for Ira Township in the amount of $25,000 in no sense to purchase mobile and handheld radios for their fire department.
Support.
Discussion. Roll call.
Commissioner Vandembosh?
Yes.
Commissioner Samasko?
Yes.
Commissioner Baldwin?
Yes.
Commissioner Beeden?
Yes.
Commissioner Trello?
Yes.
Commissioner Rushing?
Yes.
Chairperson Bo.
Yes.
Q.
This time I'd like to make a motion to approve the purchase of the point-to-point wireless system from Centil Solutions using American Rescue Plan Act funds in the amount of $120,340 for the equipment and installation and $20,800 for the annual maintenance fees.
Support.
Discussion. Roll call.
Commissioner Samasko?
Yes.
Commissioner Baldwin?
Yes.
Commissioner Beeden?
Yes.
Commissioner Trello?
Yes.
Commissioner Rushing?
Yes.
Commissioner Vandembosh?
Yes.
Chairperson Bo.
Yes.
Item R.
This time I move to approve the firewall purchase under the American Rescue Plan Act fund in the amount of $153,735.
Support.
Discussion. Roll call.
Commissioner Baldwin?
Yes.
Commissioner Beeden?
Yes.
Commissioner Trello?
Yes.
Commissioner Rushing?
Yes.
Commissioner Vandembosh?
Yes.
Commissioner Samasko?
Yes.
Chairperson Bo.
Yes.
Item S.
This time I'd like to make a motion to approve Commissioner District Two ARPA Project with McLaren Port Huron in the amount of $160,000 to purchase and install a generator and resurface the parking lot at the Yale VA Clinic.
Support. Thank you.
Discussion. Roll call.
Commissioner Trello?
Yes.
Commissioner Rushing?
Yes.
Commissioner Vandembosh?
Yes.
Commissioner Samasko?
Yes.
Commissioner Baldwin?
Yes.
Commissioner Beeden?
Yes.
Chairperson Bo.
Yes.
This time I'd like to make a motion to approve the agreement with National Restoration Incorporated for the exterior wall and skylight repair project in the amount of $270,250.
Support.
Discussion. Roll call.
Commissioner Rushing?
Yes.
Commissioner Vandembosh?
Yes.
Commissioner Samasko?
Yes.
Commissioner Baldwin?
Yes.
Commissioner Beeden?
Yes.
Commissioner Trello?
Yes.
Chairperson Bo.
Yes.
Item U.
Mr. Chair, I'd like to make a motion to approve the agreement with Miller Bolt for the administration building boiler replacement project in the amount of $62,086.20.
Support.
Discussion. Roll call.
Commissioner Vandembosh?
Yes.
Commissioner Samasko?
Yes.
Commissioner Baldwin?
Yes.
Commissioner Beeden?
Yes.
Commissioner Trello?
Yes.
Commissioner Rushing?
Yes.
Chairperson Bo.
Yes.
B.
This time I would move to approve the agreement with Miller Bolt for the administration building chiller replacement project in the amount of $431,432.85.
Support.
Discussion. Roll call.
Commissioner Samasko?
Yes.
Commissioner Baldwin?
Yes.
Commissioner Beeden?
Yes.
Commissioner Trello?
Yes.
Commissioner Rushing?
Yes.
Commissioner Vandembosh?
Yes.
Commissioner Bo.
Yes.
We're in W, correct?
Yes. At this time, I'd like to make a motion to approve the agreement with Watson Brothers for the Intervention Center Refrigeration System Replacement in the amount of $58,420.
Support.
Discussion. Roll call.
Commissioner Baldwin?
Yes.
Commissioner Beeden?
Yes.
Commissioner Trello?
Yes.
Commissioner Rushing?
Yes.
Commissioner Vandembosh?
Yes.
Commissioner Samasko?
Yes.
Chairperson Bo.
Yes.
Item X.
Sorry. At this time, I'd like to make a motion to adopt Resolution 24-16, amending parts of the St. Clair County Employees Retirement System ordinance.
Support.
Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Those opposed. Item Y.
This time I move to approve the agreement with Midwest Employers Casualty for Excess Workers' Compensation Coverage for a two-year term in the amount of $200,022.
Support.
Discussion. Roll call.
Commissioner Beeden?
Yes.
Commissioner Trello?
Yes.
Commissioner Rushing?
Yes.
Commissioner Vandembosh?
Yes.
Commissioner Samasko?
Yes.
Commissioner Baldwin?
Yes.
Chairperson Bo.
Yes.
Item Z.
Yes, at this time, I'd like to make a motion to approve the contract with Community Educational Network for the lease of excess fiber capacity for the term of July 1st, '24 through June 30th, '29 in the amount of $1,500 per site per year for the total contract cost of $37,500.
Support.
Thank you.
Discussion. Roll call.
Commissioner Trello?
Yes.
Commissioner Rushing?
Yes.
Commissioner Vandembosh?
Yes.
Commissioner Samasko?
Yes.
Commissioner Baldwin?
Yes.
Commissioner Beeden?
Yes.
Chairperson Bo.
Yes.
Item A.
Mr. Chair, I'd like to make a motion to approve the Commissioner District Seven American Rescue Plan Act Project for Clay Township in the amount of $60,000 to replace the fire department radios.
Support.
Discussion.
Mr. Chair, can Chief Rose is here? He'd like to get up and say a couple words.
Sure. I'd like to thank the Board of Commissioners for their support and this money to purchase new radios for our vehicles.
No problem.
Definitely, it's where you need it. Costa will help us pay for that. So, thank you very much.
You know, it's crazy, is I was on this board when we first started looking at the system and I think those radios are what, 15, 16 years old? And they lasted that long? In the wonderful world of technology, which is usually like two years.
Sound like the Stone Garden money from the years ago that did all the towers, Jeff? Is that what?
Yeah, yeah, I mean, you were around back then. It's a long time ago. So... Is we, all in favor? I'm sorry, roll call. I apologize, roll.
If I could, Jeff, appreciate your efforts for to help support Ira Township just as you put forward for Clay Township. So Ira Township also additionally got money from Jeff Balms.
Roll call.
Commissioner Rushing?
Yes.
Commissioner Vandembosh?
Yes.
Commissioner Samasko?
Yes.
Commissioner Baldwin?
Yes.
Commissioner Beeden?
Yes.
Commissioner Trello?
Yes.
Chairperson Bo.
Yes.
EE.
At this time, I make a motion to approve the Commissioner District Three American Rescue Plan Act Project for the St. Clair County Community Mental Health in the amount of $50,000 to purchase a mobile mental health vehicle.
Support.
Discussion. Roll call.
Commissioner Vandembosh?
Yes.
Commissioner Samasko?
Yes.
Commissioner Baldwin?
Yes.
Commissioner Beeden?
Yes.
Commissioner Trello?
Yes.
Commissioner Rushing?
Yes.
Chairperson Bo.
Yes.
CC.
This time I move to approve the Commissioner District Three American Rescue Plan Act Project for Sanborn Grashit Memorial Home in the amount of $250,000 to renovate and update bathrooms to become ADA compliant.
Support.
Discussion. Roll call.
Commissioner Samasko?
Yes.
Commissioner Baldwin?
Yes.
Commissioner Beeden?
Yes.
Commissioner Trello?
Yes.
Commissioner Rushing?
Yes.
Commissioner Vandembosh?
Yes.
Chairperson Bo.
Yes.
EE.
This time I'd move to adopt the ratifying Resolution 2418, the Collective Bargaining Agreement with St. Clair County Prosecuting Attorneys Association.
Support.
Discussion. Roll call.
Commissioner Beeden? Baldwin?
Yes.
Commissioner Beeden?
Yes.
Commissioner Trello?
Yes.
Commissioner Rushing?
Yes.
Commissioner Vandembosh?
Yes.
Commissioner Samasko?
Yes.
Chairperson Bo.
Yes.
Item FF.
We got EE first.
Oh, I'm sorry.
This time I'd like to make a motion to adopt Resolution 2419, revision indigent Defense Council rate of pay for the public defender's office.
Support.
Discussion. Roll call.
Commissioner Beeden?
Yes.
Commissioner Trello?
Yes.
Commissioner Rushing?
Yes.
Commissioner Vandembosh?
Yes.
Commissioner Samasko?
Yes.
Commissioner Baldwin?
Yes.
Chairperson Bo.
Yes.
Item FF.
I'll make a motion to accept the letter rescinding the letter of resignation from our current medical director, Remington Evans.
Support.
Liz, Greg, did you guys want to say some words?
I guess my question is, is why are we doing this at this such a late day? We had the resignation in hand. We searched out a candidate that we previously had. She was interviewed. We interviewed her again. We started the process. We've spent weeks now getting her credentials. Dr. Smith going through the process with the state to get her credential there. She is all ready to go and we just needed the contract and now we're putting the brakes on it. This person made a decision a month ago to come work for us. So are we just going to tell her that all bets are off? You're done? I just don't understand the process you guys are going through.
I have emailed you separately. Hopefully you got that. It was late. I have a lot to say. So I appreciate the time and the moments because I am super passionate about this because what this does is I'm speaking for our entire leadership team. Greg's the only one who could be here, but I have a director of nursing I'm speaking for, a director of prevention, education and planning, a director of environmental health, and some other people below that. I just want to touch on the fact about authentic relationships. So thank you for bringing that up and bringing those points in. That's so important. I've tried to establish authentic relationships with this board over the last two years. We knew that's where we needed to be after the pandemic. It was one of my goals. When I went in front of that shark tank of an interview, I'm looking at Carrie again, Lisa, and that's what it was. You know, I had to put forth those things about why I'm qualified to do this. And a lot of it was management. There is a staff of 100 individuals you manage and I want you to remember that this position is subordinate to me, right? It is underneath me. You chose to separate these roles two years ago and I respect that and actually I agree with that. These roles should have been separated from the medical health officer when finance is allowed. So we did that. That is a check and balance system. I am the one who signs public health orders. I am the one with my name there. So I just want to take every opportunity to remind everyone, although this is a physician and a medical director, we've now established this role that we check and balance each other a little bit. So to provide some reassurance in the role and who's in the role, if that's perhaps what's driving you to hold up a contract and for me to get an email at 9:00 AM yesterday of a rescinding of the resignation sent to you, not me, and then it was forwarded on to me while I was in the Board of Health meeting. These individuals just came out. They don't know me personally and that is very nice because they see a process and they see something that's going on inappropriately. So that's just very nice and I do appreciate what Dr. Nevin's done with the landfill, with Murphy Drive, those things. Those are appropriate things for a medical director to do. And if I have more time since 9:00 AM yesterday, I could have filled every one of these seats with people who I have touched as well. But I respect what Dr. Nevin has done here. So thank you for that. That all happened at 9:00 o'clock yesterday. I also want to bring you back to the fact that you tabled a contract for a fully qualified medical director. At the last meeting, Mr. Smasco met with me, said, Liz, I just didn't have time to review this. We put this on the agenda in the appropriate fashion. We submit it as we're supposed to by policy. We follow the policy. It's in there. He said, I didn't have time to review it. I respected that. I said, okay, let's do this. Let's give you time. Then you put this on here that I just found out that this was going to be on today. I just want that point made. You want me to slow down, but then you throw this on the agenda tonight. Okay. So I'm going to go through what I have written as well. So first in my experience, this is highly out of the norm. I've managed people for 12 years at the Health Department. You know I've been there 21 years. People resign. We accept a resignation. I will go back to previous medical director, Najiba Ramon voluntarily resigned, emailed Carrie. It was accepted by Carrie. She verbally also requested that it be rescinded. Carrie denied that. End of the story. No vote, no calls from any of you. Really no response at all. At that time, Carrie was given the authority that her position allows and considered my opinions as well. She called me. She communicated. She asked me, how do you feel about proceeding? I appreciate that. Fast forward to now, July 2024. Dr. Nevin emailed his resignation to Carrie and myself. He is well, but two months later, mind you, has decided to rescind his resignation, highly out of the ordinary. However, I later find out, you know, through these grapevines, not from Dr. Nevin or anyone else, that this was driven by commissioners calling him. What has not transpired or discussed outside of Carrie, Greg Brown, and my leadership team, and I'll be forced to share now, I am and will continue to always be a professional. I manage staff like I said. I understand about micromanagement, how it creeps in. It's ugly hide when people are fearful and controlling. Having the ability to self-reflect is crucial as a leader as well as to have the humility to correct our errors. And that allows, that's how I manage. That's how I allow my staff to work and allows them to do the best work. And I would like that ability to do that as well here. So I very appropriately follow the protocol, presenting a well-qualified, appropriate candidate contract to you. This is what I do. This is why I've been promoted throughout the ranks. I'm good at logistics, organizing operations, problem solving, all while having a passion for this community, the health and well-being of the community. What I am not good at, and I will admit, is politicking and what goes on here. And I'm learning and I'm getting better. But I'm just trying to make relationships, right? And have some trust between us, my knowledge and yours. So up until this point, I've sat on the side of professionalism. I have not had to discuss Dr. Nevin's performance. He simply voluntarily resigned. It's a done deal. Or so I thought. I respectfully remind you, we're speaking of an employee who's been here for one year. Moved here in January, 16 hours a week. That's this entire hubbub going on. Now, because you've been rejected, because you thought it appropriate to circumvent me and what I thought in my professional position, and I think county administration, I don't want to speak for Carrie, and insert yourself into this plan without considering me, when you don't consider me, I feel like you disregard the community and our staff. And that's really my thing and what I get super passionate about, like I said. So reflecting back on your actions, I assume this was done out of fear, mistrust, or lack of information. But how are we still there? Two years. And I know I move things fast and I'm known for that. I am known for getting through things and doing it. So probably more time has to be spent on that relationship building. I understand that, but we shouldn't be at this point. What have I done to make you mistrust my management? Frankly, my passion for health and wellness in the community? I do not believe anything or it has not been brought to my attention in any reviews or gone through Carrie back down to me. So I have to assume it's leftover pandemic fears. I sat and I thought about this, which are real, they're valid. I have many of them. I have many of them, believe me. If that's what the worry is, are we worried that a medical director is going to come in and do something that you won't like or won't measure with the community? Because that's my role. I'm the gatekeeper on that. I think we're working better than we have before, but we still have miles to go. And again, did you not institute a traditional structure with a health officer and a medical director to assure checks and balances? St. Clair County has made great strides to move beyond fear and mistrust. And if you believe, we in public health do not recognize or discuss the errors left over from the pandemic. You're wrong. We do after-action reports on the smallest of outbreaks of three, four people. We certainly have an after-action report on the pandemic and how to do better. And it's one of my goals, right? Moving forward. So what your actions have done or could potentially do is actually going to hurt Dr. Nevin, right? So now, as manager of Dr. Nevin, I've had to release his performance review to you. I've had to follow up with other emails from staff that was sent to you now. I didn't have to do that. We didn't want to, I didn't want to do that to any employee publicly. You shouldn't have to do that. But I know there is more to this story than what is allowed to be seen by our public in his medical director role. There are other roles you have to fulfill internally and there were some gaps. So in conclusion, again, highly out of the ordinary that we would accept, take back someone after they resigned, I respectfully ask that you do not allow a resigned employee the opportunity to rescind this, respecting that I, my leadership team, do have a part in this decision. But I ask that you support the contract of the candidate chosen to be presented at a later date. That's it. I'm sure that's enough.
Steve?
I just wanted to say that I want to thank Liz because I did meet with Liz. She was here when she came to committee and she'd made the offer that, because I saw Ms. Dr. Smith's name the first time at the posting of the agenda, which was five days before the committee. Never knew her, never met, didn't know anything about her. Came up to the committee vote and I still didn't know anything about her. It was a motion to post it consistent with other practices. I didn't see a problem with that. I thought it was good to do that. I was approached by a prominent person in the community that took a great exception with that and people's passion drives people to make differences that we can't even overcome and that we shouldn't do that. Everyone wants respect. I want, you know, respect from you. But, you know, on this issue, and one of the other people talked about it, deferring to a person's judgment. When I took this position, they elected me and I am a hands-on person. I don't have any rubber stamps. They didn't give me a rubber stamp and I look at stuff, I satisfy myself as well. And we talked about that and we talked about a lot of things. In fact, we had that conversation when I came on two years ago about the haunting of this coronavirus issue and all the mistrust and what it's going to do to the preventive medicine field. So all that said, I just wanted to clarify, it's not that I didn't have time, I just didn't have information. And you said you didn't know what was your job and I don't know what was and Lisa never called. This may be not her job either, you know.
What I said, if I could interject is, I could have done a better job at presenting more information. And I will do that.
And I understand, so it was me just more informational and now we have this development, which is a different development, but I just wanted to clarify that, that I made time. It's just, I really wanted, I offered to drive down to Detroit to see her, was cautious not to do that since we posted it, which was good. I agree with that, you know, we can see what happens now. But I do try to be open-minded and fair and, but I just wanted to make that one point with you. So thank you for seeing me and Mr. Brown was there as well. We had a nice chat and I think that was very healthy to do so.
So first off, I wouldn't even be able to tell you if Dr. Smith or Dr. Nevin were sitting in the room. I think I met him one time, maybe one of the interviews years ago. And so we received the intent of resignation and then the next thing that came before us was a recommendation to hire somebody without going through a posting process, right? And, okay, so be it. That was where I guess I hit my first issue. That's why I recommended to table it. Now we have a rescind in front of us. I think there was like a six-month replacement in the intent of the resignation originally. I know, is there six months out on these contracts? Four months?
There's six months from.
So there's a six-month out on this contract. I am actually obviously going to be leaving the board here come December 31st. I know George is going to be leaving too, to have to, I don't want to say take a punt on it, but let the decisions made by the new board that are coming in to decide what direction that they would like to go on this. So that's just kind of where I'm at.
Can I speak as well for a moment? I wasn't here for the committee meeting for September 5th when that first arose the information for Dr. Nevin leaving and then right behind it, yes, there was, Dr. Smith was elected to come in. So for that vote, I wasn't here for that vote. And there, when Dr. Nevin was coming in, we had an over, well, to me, it seemed like we had a sufficient amount of information about who he was, which I stated before. And again, I would have been cautious too because I didn't see anything about Ms. Smith. I actually had to try to go online and look up who she was, what her credentials were. And as elected official, I want to make sure that I'm doing my due diligence and doing right by the community and make sure that we have the right person. And so now we do have a different event that has taken place for his rescinding his resignation. And as far as I know, from attending different town halls and landfill meetings and being here, and Ms. Davis, we've seen you several times speak and Dr. Nevin has really reached out and in some of your emails, he was your first choice and he is a good choice and he's done wonderful things that I've seen. However, we know, we're not promised tomorrow. We only have today. So his letter of resignation is rescinded. I think we should consider that because he is a good candidate. That's why I chose him to begin with. And I do thank you for your leadership role as well. And I know I need to do better. I'm building relationships with you and other departments as well. So I will, I will work better on that, but I think it's something that we do need to consider.
Could I ask a question?
Yeah.
Am I allowed to? You mentioned, so you were in receipt of his, he rescinded that prior to the last meeting and that's why things were tabled? Did I hear that, the timeline? No. You received when you forwarded to me?
Yeah, because I had, because we didn't go through, we had asked to go through the process, which you did post.
That's when I got it, Jeff, when you sent it. Oh, you probably, I think you sent it to Liz as well.
Okay, I think when you were speaking, I'm sorry, you kind of inverted that and I wanted to clarify that you weren't sitting on that and not sharing it with me since the beginning of September.
No, I wasn't. No, I wasn't. When did we receive the thing? A day or two ago?
When I received the resignation, I forwarded that on to the board as well.
Where did you get it, Jeff? Did you get it from Nevin or from?
Resignation was July.
In July, I forwarded it to the board.
Resignation and I received an email from Dr. Nevin a couple of days ago, maybe, asking to be reconsidered for rescinding. George, you probably got the.
September 18th. Yesterday.
Yesterday.
Okay. Thank you for clarifying that.
Three or four things. One is the leadership roles. Past practice for positions such as this, we've always reposted. This time we decided not to. So we're not going past practice. So the leadership part of that should have went to past practice and got this posted, in my opinion.
That's fair.
In the, when Dr. Nevin got hired, he actually came here and we were as commissioners able to ask him specific questions. We weren't afforded that this time. We didn't have anybody here. I don't know, Smith, never met her, never talked to her. And we weren't afforded that this time to even have consideration to what person we're going to put in this position. So that's a concern. The letter that I received yesterday for the rescinding came yesterday. The posting of this job, which initiated that, at least for me, initiated where this need to be addressed immediately, is that the posting is still open until the 25th of this month. By accepting this, if we do decide to as a board, then there's no posting that's going to potentially be required. So that's part of why the timeframe on this is that we have an opportunity to keep the medical director that was approved by this board prior to and has been acting at this. So he has some history with the county and for whatever reason, a lot of people support him, a lot of people don't, but I don't think they don't support him because of the job they've done. I think they don't support him because they want somebody else in the position. So I could.
That's not true from our perspective. And, oh, I'm sorry, I just wrote down, I wanted to, I'm sorry, you made a statement and I was going to say something that I disagreed with that, but out it went. Oh, the posting. So you're saying you're moving forward with this very quickly because there is a posting out there and you want to, you know, if you were to allow him to rescind his resignation, you would end the posting and?
No. If we potentially rescind this, and I'm not sure what's going to go the next step, but that's the first step we have to take.
Right. But there, that, I'm sure, I don't know, Carrie knows or HR, so if there's people sitting in there who applied, you would just simply probably send them a formal letter that this position is no longer available. I don't think that should drive what's done.
Well, I don't think what should have happened is that we didn't post it initially, which we did not do, as we have done in the past. Same thing when you applied for the position. We posted that when a vacancy happened. We did not do that this time.
Right.
So we're not going with past practice and that's a leadership decision.
It was. It was a decision of mine.
I'm giving you my position that we weren't afforded consideration because if we would have known this would have been a posted position rather than just come to us in committee meeting, then we would have been given that consideration and then we'd be able to do our due diligence as county commissioners. That was not afforded to us.
And I should have spent more time talking here in August about what the plans were and I would have known ahead of time how you felt about that. And I did feel it is legal, it is appropriate as a contracted position. I'm not going out of sight of any kind of collective bargaining rules. It is allowable. It is not how protocol has been done before. You are right. So I do accept that and respect that.
You've been, and if I can interject, you've always been very approachable. Anything I've asked you about, we've had private conversations and I appreciate you for that. Always be able to have conversations whether we agree or not. You've always been approachable, so I do appreciate that.
You go. I'll finish.
Georgia?
Thanks, Liz, for being here and for the information. The position is posted now, correct?
Correct.
So this board didn't, you know, so we've talked, because I think when you go back to how long, so a lot of times you have a position, if it has to be filled again within a certain amount of time, maybe that's a 30-day timeframe, maybe it's a 90-day timeframe where you wouldn't necessarily have to post. Maybe a year is too much. So I could probably get behind the posting and if Dr. Smith was willing to come in to go through that. So I didn't really have any issues with that side of things, just because it'd been a year. If we were talking nine months, or yeah, I'm sorry, 90 days, maybe I would have felt a little different. But with it being posted now and Dr. Nevin, who I've only met a couple of times with the landfill and everyone is correct, at the landfill meetings, I learned more about landfills than I probably ever really wanted to know about and I think he was highly effective and was able to communicate some of those things. I don't think that's all of the job, however, and I think now that more information has come out about, you know, things that you had to release tonight, moving forward this quickly when we just set and said, it was too quick to approve a contract, but we, unless in 24 hours can accept a rescission of a resignation. I remember very clearly Dr. Merkentown being told she could apply. It's an open position. So when it was split into two, it was, we're not firing you, you can apply for either one of those positions if you'd like to come back. So if we've already taken the action to table it, properly post it, everyone has the ability. I don't know why at this point we would stop what we decided two weeks ago to move forward and that's not pro or con any of the applicants. That is, I am down to pure process because now, like, you know, Commissioner Smasco needed more information on Dr. Smith, which I totally appreciate and understand and agree with, I think there's new information about Dr. Nevin that might require some due diligence too. I think it'd be really irresponsible to not move forward with the posting process today as we decided as a group and see how the process plays out regardless of applicants. So that's, that's kind of where I am.
So just a couple of points. So we have done this process, Liz. You're not inappropriate in hiring. The way that it went down is appropriate. We have done that in the past. It is your responsibility to fill that position. It is this board's job to review the contract and to make sure that the contract is appropriate. So you have not done anything out of line or inappropriate. As I also want to bring up that Dr. Nevin did come to a meeting, but not until his contract was up for vote. So it would be, it would not have been appropriate for Dr. Smith to come to meet the board, essentially. I know she couldn't be at the last meeting. She had intended on being here tonight, had her contract moved forward. So that would have been afforded to her and to the commissioners to have that experience. So it's this commission that negated that from each other. They have stopped that process for themselves. I just want to reiterate that this board has appointed a Board of Health. We each have a Board of Health member that represents our district. These are open meetings. We have members of the communities come. Commissioner Torella was there this week, but so to the rest of my commissioners, I invite you to come. They are lovely meetings at 9:00 AM. The only thing that would make them better is coffee, but that's just me. But I would encourage you to come and see the work that that board is doing. And this board is behind Liz and behind Greg and the process. And so when you, when you sidestep that board, you're sidestepping people you've appointed. You're taking control that is constitutionally required, that this board, this health board of advisory board be in place and you take that power away from them when you decide within 24 hours to make these decisions. Now, at the last meeting, I did disagree with posting the position, but as a commission, we moved forward. The position is posted and I can get behind that process and we do have a candidate that's applied. So we, I don't understand why we would do this now. The optics on it are bad, real bad. Whether you believe it to be true or not, the community is upset that you don't trust the person that you've hired to be the health director. You don't trust her to do her job. You're sidestepping administration who supports the health director and her decisions. This level of micromanagement is embarrassing and this is not who we are as a county. We trust our employees to do their job. That's why they're hired. That's why we trust Carrie to review them in their position. That's her role. This is not our role to decide winners and losers, who gets to go through the process and who doesn't. So the whiplash that I'm experiencing as a commissioner is embarrassing. I feel for Liz and your department, your employees. I feel for our Board of Health. They make hard decisions. They push back. I'm in those meetings, they push back on you. They give you things that they want to know. And I just, I just think the actions tonight are unnecessary and embarrassing.
One last thing, if I could. The reason Dr. Merkentown isn't here anymore, because the actions that were taken during the pandemic, she advised that initially in the summer, I guess it was three years ago, that she would advise this board, because we have to answer all the questions from all the residents that call us. And we weren't afforded that ability on December 31st. We called 17 school districts. And that's part of the reason we separated those positions, because we weren't given consideration then. And again, I'll reiterate the size. We did not find, follow past protocol on what we, how we post jobs. We did not do that and we weren't afforded and maybe it's a learning curve. I've had a long learning curve sitting up here as a township supervisor, that we should have been given more consideration as county commissioners because we're the ones that are going to have to answer the phone calls on who sits in these positions.
I see the pandemic a little different than hiring a staff who reports to me, but respectfully.
I also want to just ask this board, how long are we going to hold Liz King responsible for what the issues that transpired from her predecessor? She deserves to have a clean slate. She deserves to have trust until she breaks it. And she's already admitted tonight that maybe she could have handled the vetting process better. And she is supporting opening the position and allowing people to apply. She's proving to us that she's listening to us and trying to do better. And that's a two-way street and we have to stop holding her accountable for mistakes that were made in the past, that were not hers to own.
I just wanted, after Liz was done, to state my position on it. We're cited law here by one of the citizens, but one thing the public health code clearly states is that we are the local governing entity. That means that this board does have and must have supervision. That's how citizens are represented and how services are delivered. And I like working with Liz. I have confidence in Liz. As Dave said, we've gotten along well. Dr. Nevin appeared before a board back in July 20th. I looked up the video because I remember when he appeared, he said some things that really, really resonated with me. Had family in the area, born in Toronto, 14-year Army career doctor, volunteered for deployment in several war zones, including Afghanistan. But he started by saying he was familiar and sensitive to this coronavirus controversy. We're not blaming Liz for this. We're not blaming anybody, but I'll tell you what, that was an ugly and unnecessary episode in this county that I... was an ugly and unnecessary episode in this county that I don't wanna see happen again. And I'm not saying that Dr. Smith would cause that, but some other things that the doctor said on July 20th, and it's on the video, he noted that as a medical doctor, very early on, he expressed some concerns about the emerging medical interventions, and that's what I want. I don't want someone who's closed-minded on that, I want someone who's open-minded. Maybe Dr. Smith's more open-minded, but I know Dr. Nevin is, he's acted that way and he's done those things. It's a right for people to have personal choice in medical care. The, another thing was he was, talked about his medical philosophy, and I'll quote him, there are very few perfect solutions in medical issues we face in our society. Medical doctors and health professionals need to consider pros and cons, that's open-mindedness. I really, it was a breath of fresh air, I really liked that about him. I don't wanna lose that. He also said, most notably, that in public health, in his words, medical doctors, health professionals need to, need to use values and principles of the community to guide them in medical decisions for that community. And to me, that is absolutely spot on with what I want for medical director, and I think I was on this board a long time, and I was, I disagree a lot, I try to be kind about it, but we don't agree on everything, but they don't, nothing personal, and so if we don't agree on something, I still get, we're gonna respect each other and this board's gonna take a vote. But the doctor further stated that it's not wrong to use those principles and, and community values, it's merely a reflection that public health serves the public. To me, it's profound, that's exactly what we all want, public health that serves the public. And I was around when Merkentown came, I did a 29-page report to this board when I was a citizen, before I got back on, about the authority of this board to monitor and govern and have oversight over that department, and I felt there was the state bringing into our community things that we didn't value and we didn't want and weren't necessary. I think that's why she lost her job.
I don't disagree with you on those things, on those points.
When you're done, this is not a debate, you're not done, I mean, you can, I'm saying my thing now and I'll, I'll shut up, but public health decisions, this is another thing, must protect and save lives consistent with the priorities and values of the community. That's what I want, that's what I wanna see. So I, you know, I'm gonna favor, I'm gonna support moving this on and accepting his retraction, because I, I don't want this long retracted, I don't want to reapply and go through all this, it's just baloney. He's here, he's, he's the guy that I liked in that position, he's the guy I want in that position. Now, he's not had a performance review, he bugged out before you could do your performance review-
No, it's there in your email.
Or whatever it was. I mean, he, I don't know if you ever had that with him, but he's gonna have to have that with you, and then we're gonna be talking to you hopefully and get that straightened out, if there's things we need to do to, to get you guys to work well together, that's what I wanna see happen. But sometimes contrary voices are good. His clinical decisions have been spot on, I've, I've seen nothing about clinical problems, but, so that's why I would support this, and the people here need to hear that. And, and, and as the fellow that approached last week, he probably won't believe this based on anything other than racism, and when I try to explain that it's really not, it's just my due diligence, but perception's reality for people. So that's where we're at, and I'll quote a military phrase, you know, when you receive flak, you're probably over the target, and that's what I figure, we're maybe receive some flak on this, but I really feel strongly that we're on target here and we need to make the department the best it can be, and sometimes that requires our supervision and involvement, so that's, I'm done.
Commissioner Vandembosh.
Carrie, where are we at with past practice and legality of rescinding a resignation like this? Has counsel been, have they given us an opinion on this?
So we have discussed with legal counsel. Historically, in past practice, we have not accepted when people rescind their resignation. We've had several instances where employees have resigned and they have changed their mind. I can't think of one instance where we have allowed them to rescind it.
Dave, what I can tell you-
But it is, it is allowable under the law.
I've spoken, I emailed Gary Fletcher, my first email to Jeff after he sent this notice out, as I said, sizing this up, we are the legal entity of supervision, he's been a constant director, there's been no break in service, and his resignation was, had a six-month trigger on it. I said, if, if, to me, if he's, if he's retracted it, it's just retracted. Well, Jeff, see, he sent it to corporation counsel, I hadn't thought of this, so Jeff sent it to Gary, and Gary will pine back, it merely takes board action. So the law is that if we consent to his retraction, that's all it takes, if we don't, then he can reapply if he wants, but, you know, we do have lawful authority to do that, and I would urge you to do that.
Okay, roll call.
Commissioner Samasco.
This is to accept the retraction.
Correct.
Yes.
Commissioner Beeden.
No.
Commissioner Walden.
No.
Commissioner Torello.
Yes.
Commissioner Rushing.
Yes.
Commissioner Vandembosh.
No.
Chairperson Ball.
Yes.
Moving on, administrators' report.
A couple of things this evening, the board has requested that we put together a brownfield workshop at 4 o'clock on October 3rd. I just wanna confirm that we would have a quorum of attendance, and at this point, staff is unclear what you would like as agenda items to be discussed, so we can prepare for that.
So we have got Jeff Hawkins, who is, works for Fishbeck, who is our brownfield person. We've got obviously some new incoming members. Brownfields are a tool that we use for a lot of different projects, some of the commissioners may have more experience with them, with others, but I think it was gonna be more of a, like a brownfield 101, was not asking for any specific actions. At the time, was going to work on bringing some people, and I think I can work with Carrie and get an agenda put together. There has been some changes in the laws, as far as what are allowable, obviously, we had the one come before us for Corcat that didn't exist two years ago.
A year ago, a year ago made the, amended the statute, the brownfield redevelopment statute, to allow for housing where there's a housing need as defined by MISTDA.
Correct, and just brownfields in general, like I said, I think with, you know, just the changeover on the board, this is more of a educational type of thing, and brownfields, sometimes I hear just some crazy information on them when people go and talk, that's just not true, to be quite honest, so to get a, get that information out there so people-
Jeff Donaldson had emailed about putting something together, and I asked him, he said it would be fairly remedial, and I, I don't like to go to meetings where I'm not gonna learn something, but I'm gonna come to that meeting, because you're gonna have the developer there, and you're gonna have Fishbeck there, who's the consultant that drafted the brownfield plan. I've probably learned something from those fellows, but there's also, I would just encourage the board, there's philosophical approaches and issues with respect to economic development incentives like tax income financing and like recaptures and like abatements. In some states, in fact, this whole recapture business started in California in 19, early 90, mid 50s, and some states have actually outlawed it, because it's been abused and there's too much of their property going off the books into these things like Chicago and big cities and things like that. So I'm not saying it's happening here, but when that thing hit my desk, I asked, do we have policy on it? I asked, you know, our planning department, if we had a policy, they're supposed to be working on that, so, you know, are we gonna, what public purpose does it serve and all that? I mean, I think we need to take a look at it, that's kinda where I was at with it.
Well, and I think we can point to some specifics, I can have Dan Casey, for example, pull the Magna Project, that shows paybacks, those types of things, you know, and then-
And the public needs to see it, too, because it's, as confusing as it is for me as a lawyer at 40 years with an advanced degree, it's confusing stuff, it's hard, it's hard to understand it and get the nuances of how that works, how they develop the area, how they develop the, the schedule for the, the taxes and all this stuff, it's, it's not intuitive to me, because I'm not a finance guy.
Yeah, it's kinda brownfield.
What's that? It is, it is, no, it is good, I might, I've been, I'm, I'm gonna come.
Yeah, well, brownfields do tie in with TIF capture, too, so the repayment method, so it's just like I said, more for, I think, just, you know, some of the board members, obviously, here have more experience, less experience, we, as I said earlier, we have a new board coming in, so to get a good understanding on these, because you will be seeing these projects, you know, moving forward.
But this is a public thing, so public, if they can come, will learn, too.
Yeah, yeah, absolutely, yeah, yeah, it's, it's a workshop, just open workshop.
Is that 4:00 PM?
4:00 PM.
4:00 PM, October 3rd.
And then will it also be streamed, so if someone can't be here, they could listen to the presentation? But if it's not streamed live, it would still be, so-
Yeah, we, we'll make sure IT is here and recording it and streaming it like a regular meeting.
Jeff?
Yes, David?
She needs some specific questions, here's the concerns I got, it's 24 years, it's the city of Algonac, they can do whatever they choose.
We're not, we're not talking, we're talking about brownfields and-
Yeah, the brownfield 52 house thing, brownfield, correct?
That's a brownfield, we are not gonna be, that, that project's not coming up for a vote at all or anything? I'll probably bring the developer in here, so you can ask-
This Fishbeck is the same guy, Fishbeck did the one for the recapture, he did the one for the abatement, that's, he's a-
Why don't you get some stuff and email to Jeff Donaldson, some of the questions that you would have.
I've got some specific concerns, and we should take every brownfield or anything that comes before it, it's on its own merits. The 24 years concern me, if we're, if that's what we're gonna be discussing.
That's specific to that project, no, and we're not talking specifically about that project, right?
Okay.
I mean, I-
We're not gonna talk about it, then I'll just listen to what a brownfield is.
I think that was the idea.
Some generalizations, and I think maybe to have some questions queued up, because I am gonna have the developer come here, just to, so, yeah. Get him over to Jeff Donaldson, can you do that? Sounds good.
Anything they can send out in advance, I do like to see stuff in advance, if there's anything they can provide, resources, things to look at, I'm more than welcome to have that, to take a look at that.
Yeah, well, we'll do our best, that's why I was trying to nail down what you actually wanted on the agenda, so we could prepare for that.
Probably a brief overview of brownfields in general, so let's, you and I will get together, and we'll get-
Well, there was an email, I wanted like the development agreement for the one thing, I wanted to know any zoning issues that were out there, things like that, but that was from the city, I actually asked the city manager for that, and never got, I got nada, so I don't know.
We should do a joint meeting with them if we have specific questions about that project, but it's two issues, right? If they're gonna continue to come up, then the, the general public, who has a lot of questions about this, also needs a very remedial baseline, what is a brownfield, why does it keep coming up, why do some places outlaw it, start there, and then maybe specific to the 52 house project, a separate meeting, because it is two, you know, they don't all work the same. So a very basic intro to brownfields, and then specific to, here's what's happening in Algonac, how do we feel about that? Because at some point, this board might have to vote on something like that, but I think you need both pieces, because I hear a lot of misinformation, so I think getting an understanding first is probably helpful for us and the public.
Yeah, I like it.
Okay.
All right, sorry, Carrie.
That's okay.
You're all set, Carrie, you know exactly what you're doing.
Round 101.
I can tell, I can tell exactly what you need.
We will put something together. The ARPA funds, some commissioners, you still have funds left for your district allocations, we really need to get those under contract immediately, so we can meet our end-of-the-year deadline. So Dina's, you know, been reaching out, make sure that if you don't have all of your items under contract, that you at least have projects, so they're to the consultants, so we can get those contracts in front of you prior to the end of the year.
And I believe mine's covered.
It was either last week or two weeks ago, myself and landfill staff, we met with Tetra Tech for a progress meeting on the different methods they were looking at for some of our PFOS remediation. I expect to have something from them very soon, in terms of a recommendation of, regarding the EPA grant that what, that Campbell Township was proposing, as well as some recommendations on what different methods would look like in the cost benefit for us at our facility. Our opioid subcommittee has been starting to meet regular now that we have, now that they have a staff person with dedicated hours assigned to it. We've also broke out into some subwork groups that are working on some very specific things, since it's hard to get the whole group together, and those subgroups are meeting regularly monthly, so you'll see-
We'll be expending those pursuant to recommendations, how that's gonna work, they're gonna come up with stuff.
So that committee will come up with recommendations, they will, they'll be presented to you for your consideration. Our materials management consultant, RFP, is currently out to bid, those bids are due back on October 1st. Now, as far as appointments to the materials management committee, we have only received two applicants, so we're actually trying to reach out, since the positions are very specific to different industries, we're gonna start trying to-
And that's on the county website?
Yes.
Robert, you'd asked me about that, have you applied on the county website? Okay, well, all right, you better get on it.
So we'll be reaching out to different entities that might qualify under that and, you know, just send out-
And the website lists, I'm assuming, the various people we're looking for, or no?
Yes, the requirements for each position.
Okay.
That was also sent to us, so you have a copy of that.
Okay.
Yeah.
And how many positions, there like a, over a dozen or two dozen?
Eleven, I believe.
Eleven, okay.
Yeah, Chris has been handling that for me, that's why I looked at her.
She has a mind for trash, we appreciate that.
The meet and hunt contract that we requested was removed this evening, that is because the MTAD Office of Aeronautics would like us to change the scope of that crosswind study to make it, I believe, less inclusive, they thought it could be, possibly be streamlined, so the airport will be coming forward probably next month with a new proposal.
That's gonna get us more grant money or something, or what?
Hopefully, that is for the wind study and the usual study of the crosswind runway that was deemed ineligible for funding because of-
So the benefit to this-
Which basically, you'd get no federal funds, and airports are federally funded at 90%, so this is a huge deal, if we don't pass-
So if you do this, it may support improvements at the, okay.
Yeah, we would not be able to afford to maintain our crosswind runway without the federal and state funding. That's all I have this evening.
Motion for the minister's report.
So move, Walden?
Support.
On favor.
Aye.
Any miscellaneous business? Steve?
Since Ms. Miller's still here on this thing she gave on, on-
Matthew Mason.
Yeah, Matthew Mason. You know, I was a prosecutor for 18, 20 years, and the saddest thing for prosecutors, when you charge a case and you get an acquittal, and so people want justice, but I'll tell you what, that, that Mike's office charges aggressively, and they negotiate aggressively. They're one of the toughest ones in the three-county area that I practice, so if Mike Wendling's not, you know, issuing a criminal charge, it's not because he doesn't care, I'll guarantee you that, it's because there, you can risk an acquittal. There was just the poor here, I think someone called me today and said the, the gal that died in a car crash, the poor here and teacher, they acquitted on causation on OWI death. Well, you know, they, they didn't have enough evidence to get that, so they found him not guilty, that's how that works. So the cold cases, I mean, that's how things, people make confessions, people say stuff later, it comes up, so I just give Mike the grace, you know, to, and maybe for yourself to understand, there's a time for everything, and, and you do not wanna run off and charge a case and get an acquittal, because you're done, jeopardy attaches, done, he can laugh all the way to hell, you know, so we don't want that to happen. Well, and I don't know, they got victims' rights, you know, those folks have been, been, when I was there, they were great, I'm assuming they're still great, you know, support for the family, but maybe the family needs, maybe Mike's not communicating that well enough to say why, but if he don't, he should, in my opinion, should meet and talk to them about that. Here's, as a trial lawyer, you can tell them, here's the argument, here's the counterargument, here's reasonable doubt, here's the jury instruction, you know, you gotta be careful, you, you don't wanna just run off and, and get an acquittal, so, and I don't know anything about the case-
Any other miscellaneous business?
If it's a strong case, it wouldn't apply, but that's all, thank you.
Receiving file.
Chair, I'd like to make a motion, receiving file packets, they were sent to the commissioners' packets at their places and any other information presented.
Support.
On favor.
Aye.
Adjournment.
Motion to adjourn.
Support.
On favor.
Aye.
We are adjourned.